Good evening and welcome to the board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, November 24. If you are watching live on Monday, November 24, and would like to call in with comments or questions, we encourage you to do so. The call-in number is 769-1677. As always, you can watch us live on Verizon or Cablevision Cable TV and on a live webcast at PCTV76.org. And within a couple of days, you can pick up an on-demand webcast at PCTV76.org. So all of you will have the opportunity to snip out of that and save for posterity your moment of youth recognition. We always have the urge, since we get a big audience and a captive audience, to bore you with all kinds of things. We will not do that tonight. But while we do have you, let me make a couple of announcements about things that are coming up soon. The free parking in the downtown to support holiday shopping is going to begin Black Friday, this coming Friday, November 28. Then it will continue through December 26th. So there will be free parking, the meters will be bagged. Time limits still apply. It's still possible to get a ticket by parking too long, but you will not have to pay for parking, and we hope that assists the merchants as they hope it will in supporting their holiday sales. Our annual tree and dredle lighting and sing-along is going to take place at the corner of Mannville and Edgewood on December 3 at 7:00 p.m. So we encourage you to come there. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for their assistance in that. And the Chamber of Commerce has also planned some holiday season events. There is a holiday open house. You'll see the posters around. All the stores, December 6th and 7th, the weekend of Saturday, Saturday, December 6th and 7th are the holiday open house. And the following weekend, Saturday, December 13, the PHS Camerata, perhaps some of you in this room, will be strolling the downtown and singing as well. So lots of stuff going on, and we encourage you to take advantage of all of that. The biggest item on our agenda tonight and the reason for this big turnout is our annual Youth Recognition Night, which is a night we all look forward to and hope you do. We spend a lot of the year talking about things that have to be fixed in the town and are happy on a night like this to summon together all of the young people in the community who've been working on fixing them. So I'm going to move over to the podium, and we'll go through each of these groups and invite all of you up. We have one more prime seat here in the jury box if anyone is... Oh, no, someone is sitting there. Sorry, seat's already taken. Every year at this time, we reach out to local organizations and ask them to nominate young people who have served the community in various ways through these organizations. That includes service organizations, religious organizations that run youth groups, and we get back a stack, a stack of names of young people who deserve recognition. And it's our pleasure and honor to have all of you come here tonight. Let me say at the outset, we have a certificate for all of you. If we have spelled your name wrong, do not suffer in silence. As you make your way around, let Judy know and we'll fix it for you. So further, if for any reason we have forgotten someone, please pipe up. We've worked pretty hard to make sure we've captured everybody on the list, but there's always a risk of mistake. So we're going to go through these groups, and I want to invite, if there's an adult leader or a youth leader from any of these groups who would like to talk about what you have done in the course of the year, I will encourage you to do so. We'll start with the Pleasantville Presbyterian Church Youth Group. Is there someone who'd like to talk about your activities? There's the guy.
So just very briefly about the Presbyterian Church Youth Group. It's a great group. A lot of the programs that we run are sort of dreamed up by our youth. My favorite nights are the nights when we just sort of relax and be kids again, whether we're watching a movie or cooking in the kitchen. But if you go based on the enthusiasm of the kids, I think the mission nights are some of the most exciting nights. We do things like fundraiser shop and wrap Christmas presents that we send to Central Appalachia. We prepare goodies that our deacons give out in our outreach ministries and any sort of other crazy mission activity. There's always a lot of energy and enthusiasm, and it's really inspiring for me.
Let me ask you to stay here, and we'll call up each of the youth group members together. When we call all of you up, come on up. We'll give you a certificate. You can make your way around the loop and head out back that way. So Catherine Berg. You've let it off. Congratulations. Thank you. Kalen Bronkema. Logan Bronkema. All right. Logan Bronkema. Closely followed by Catherine Stargiati. And Ben Trombetta. I thank you all. Thank you, Brian. If I can leave you with these, maybe you can distribute those to those guys who couldn't get here tonight. The Presbyterian Church also runs a program called Challenge to Change. Have we put so many of you back? Who is this man?
I'm Brian. I don't know that I've recorded. I'm Brian. I don't know that I...
I do know.
...thought that the first time. Challenge to Change is in its third year. We just finished our third year at the Pleasantville Presbyterian Church, and we've sort of brought about some really challenging ideas over the course of these three years. And it's been amazing to watch as our youth and participants sort of try to make a change in their own life and a change in the world. The highlight of the program, of course, is our trip to Florida each year. We work with migrant farm workers. This year, we got to go down to Amakali, Florida, and learn about the Coalition of Amakali Workers and how they're working to fight injustice in the tomato fields. It was a really powerful trip. But when the week is all done, on Saturday, we invite all of the kids back to the camp for a pool party, and I think that's one of the greatest nights. So after we're done all of the work, we still have to play hard, too.
Thank you. Stay here again. As is true on the adult side of the volunteer ledger, there is lots of crossover. So we're going to have lots of second names. Make your way around again, but only one bag, please. Catherine Berg leads it off again. Welcome back. Kalen, and I guess Dylan Bronkema. Closely followed by Logan Bronkema. Thank you, sir. Olivia Nemig. Shall we begin? Carter Antennes. And Audrey Taco. Oh, gee. All right. Yes. There's Carter. Switching gears, our Saturday mornings in Memorial Plaza are the site of an extraordinarily vigorous farm market thought by lots of people to be perhaps the best in Westchester County. That is due in large part to the Farm Market Committee and the folks at Food Chester who run it, and they are supported by a cast of student interns. Someone want to speak for the farm market? Welcome.
All right. So, thanks. Our farmer's market had a really good year this year. We were named the best farmer's market in Westchester. And because of that, a lot of people ask us, "What's in our secret sauce?" And the answer is, "It's organic volunteerism." A market like ours is a labor of love and commitment to the community, and it takes a ton of work. I know it looks like the farmers just show up and set up their food on the tables, but there's so much work that goes on in the background, and our interns know all of it, from how to set up the audio for our musicians to how to set up the kids' area. There's just so much going on. I was enjoying my last falafel of the season last Saturday.
I was, too.
Yeah, he was. And right after that, I sat down at the manager's table, and I just watched our interns do their thing, and I was actually excited to get to do some of it. You know, I sold a couple of bags and was doing this work and directing people, and I realized, man, it just doesn't stop. You have a busy market. People are coming up asking all kinds of questions. But I'm really proud of our interns. You know, we've grown this program from one intern three years ago to 12 interns now, and they're not just from Pleasantville. They come from Horace Greeley and Westlake, because they all want in. And they work very, very hard. And, you know, I just want to thank all of the interns and also all of the families, especially the parents, who helped make it possible by dropping off and picking up and supporting them, because without their support, it doesn't happen. So Steve? You want to... This is Steve Bates, the Executive Director of the Farmer's Market, who runs the program and the market.
So I love a mic, but I'll be as brief as possible. I love talking about these kids, though. You know, teenagers get a bad rap. I don't know why. You know, when we started our market intern program and we realized how critical this team was going to be to our success, there were murmurings, "Well, you know, will they be bored? Will they be sullen? Will they have iPhones?" And I think that the things that I'm saying tonight really broadly are true of every Pleasantville youth that we're recognizing tonight. And any adult who has worked with these kids knows, they are fantastic. They really and truly are. So as you, as we blunt that initial impression, it is important to point out, these kids are generous, immensely so. They're responsible. They are passionate. They try new things every week. They're optimistic, and they're definitely leaders. I mean, as Peter, you know, mismarked one of the things on the clipboard, an intern was the very first to point out, "You know, Peter, there's another process here." So as evidence, I would like to bring up a number of members who are here tonight and name those who may not be. And as you hear your name, please come up and perhaps as a group stand together, because truly, as a team, they handle the flow of 3,000 people on a Saturday. So I will start by naming, you'll appreciate this is in alphabetical order...
Go for it.
Sarah Kusak, if you are here tonight, please come on. Shane Howe, if you are here tonight, please come up. Isak Leon. Alessandra Mamascalco. Nicole Osmanov. Melanie Stopler. Jeffrey Wang. And while they're close enough to here in passing, I have this final compliment of this team in particular. Our interns work as teams in an environment where 3,000 people show up in four hours. That takes teamwork. They work in shifts between their sports, their homework, other jobs, SAT tests, driver's ed classes, and they fit it in. When they come to the market, they have real jobs and real programs, and they can do that in, and I've seen it, hot sun, high winds, torrential rains. And yet, they continue to send emails to me like David did midsummer, which was something like, "Steve, you didn't sign me up for anything, but I'm free if you need me." Last week, on our last Saturday outside, our interns came on time with a positive spirit, and they worked together assisting vendors and shoppers. On that table in front of where they were working was a spray bottle of Windex. It was fine in the shed, but when we brought it out, it instantly turned frozen like a slushy. And we kept that there all day, just to point out, and I rest my case, Pleasantville youth volunteers are the best, and they are apparently a lot tougher than Windex. On behalf of the village and the market and the trustees, I want to thank each of you as a team and each of you individually, you've done such a great job in 2014. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you, Farm Market guys. It's a toss-up, which is the more extreme condition Appalachia, we're working at the farm market. Holy Innocence has been a center of service for this community for generations, and this year is no exception. First group we have to recognize tonight is the Holy Innocence Youth Group. Someone like to speak? Welcome.
My name's Tom Conady. I'm the Youth Minister of Holy Innocence. Kids are wondering why I got so dressed up. You know, every once in a while, I have to act like an adult.
That's why we do this, once a year.
So I'm not going to talk too much, because this is our president here, Nancy Howe. She'll tell you more about some of the things that the group does. We have an extraordinary group. We're going to recognize all our senior leaders tonight. They just know, our mission is simple. It's one of service, all right? We know that it feels good to do good. We know that it's our blessing when we reach out to serve other people in need, all right? With that, Nancy Howe, our president.
Our members of Holy Innocence Youth Group kindly devote time to planning with kids at the local cottage school, serving food on breakfast runs in New York City, and being the face of our parish for youth masses. We will travel to Alabama this June to spread our service and faith, and I think all members would agree, Holy Innocence Youth Group has tons of fun, positive energy, and puts that energy to incredible work with the help of our leader, Mr. Conady.
Honoring Holy Innocence Youth Group members, starting with Rachel Cooper. Anne Marie DeCarlo. Victoria Macera. Are you guys sitting in alphabetical order? It's too good. And now for the Holy Innocence Education Program. I'll forgive the Yankees outfit. We got sandem on today.
My name's Jerry Ragman. I'm the Director of Religious Education, Faith Formation at Holy Innocence. We deal with first through eighth grade children, and we also have a classroom of children who can't learn in a traditional class. We run solely on volunteers. For the young people who come and help out, the things that I admire most is they have a true love for the children, they're great role models for the children, they're great inspiration for the adults.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Ignore the tag. I think we heard that nobody would be here from J-Teen Leadership. Is that true? The J-Teen Leadership Circle is a group that has participated in a reading and literacy celebration, inspiring 200 children and families to read and to enjoy learning. They participated in an interfaith Habitat for Humanity, working in downtown New Rochelle, and they continue to stay involved with Habitat for Humanity, Midnight Runs, Kids Closet, and Hurricane Sandy Rebuilding. Those students who I think are not here tonight, but if you are, please come up. Jacob Mara. Josh Wallin. If anybody's stuck out in the hall, we've got some room on the side here. Please come on in. Don't, don't feel you have to stay out in the vestibule. Pleasantville Boy Scouts, Troop 12. Anybody here representing that group that would like to speak about the activities? There are four people being honored tonight from Troop 12, all of whom have raised funds to help less fortunate scouts. They volunteer to council events, participated in various service projects at the Presbyterian Church, all demonstrating exemplary leadership skills. And those four are Nicholas Bishop. There you go. Come this way. Thank you, sir. Head that away. Nicholas refurbished the village dog park. Fred built the handrail and created an access point to Opera Man's Pond. Robert John Santander. Head that away. Built a viewing platform in the backfield at Pleasantville High School. And Patrick Watts. Patrick built the staircase to the high school edible garden. So impressive stuff. Pleasantville High School Echo Program, longstanding service program at the high school. Is there someone who'd like to speak about Echo's activities?
Hi, I'm Michael Zacker.
And I'm Danielle Murray.
We are the co-presence of the Echo Club, which stands for Encouraging Children to Help Others. We are the largest club at the high school and provide community service opportunities, not only in Pleasantville, but also in Westchester and beyond. We organize important events such as the blood drives, walks for various charitable groups, Homework Helpers Club, and programs for elderly and youth community members.
We thank our officers and dedicate members who are here tonight, as well as our advisors, Ms. Steinberg and Mrs. Mara, for their support. Thank you to the mayor and board members for recognizing our commitment to service in the community.
You can greet each of your members, starting with Giancarlo Angelilo. Thank you. Congratulations. You've already met Danielle Murray. And the man always at the end of the list, Michael Z. Zacker. Also at Pleasantville High School is the Student Visions Program, which is a venture with the Pleasantville community, the Recreation Department, and the Chamber of Commerce. Would someone like to speak about the Visions Program? Is there an echo? Welcome.
Thank you. Hello again. I'm Michael Zacker, the Vice President of Student Visions. Student Visions is a small club in the school that works with the Chamber of Commerce and the Lions Club. We organize various events such as the tree lighting ceremony and the annual school ski trip. We also work with other organizations such as Smile Train, Guiding Eyes for the Blind, and Heifer International. I thank all the officers who are here tonight, as well as the advisors, Mrs. Joanne Puglisi and Mrs. Toni Emerson. Thank you to the mayor and the board members for recognizing our commitment to service in the community.
Student Vision members being honored are James Baython. Hannah Baileys. Mr. Lord.
Yes, sir.
Want to read this one?
Okay, hold on. Oh, I get to read that one.
And Rebecca Lord, who's not here, but I'll take it. Accepting on behalf of Rebecca Lord is her father, Hale Samer. Isabel Schwartz. Gail Zarek, enter and sign in, please. The Appalachian Service Project runs through the Presbyterian Church. An extraordinary thing that seems only to get bigger and more lively and more successful with more heart and soul behind it. Let us know.
Thank you so much. It does seem to get bigger every year. This year, we sent 42 youth volunteers and 17 adult volunteers to a small town in southern West Virginia, a region of our country in central Appalachia that experiences some of the most persistently high poverty rates seen in this country. Pleasantville ASP is the name of our all-volunteer group. ASP stands for Appalachia Service Project, which is actually a nonprofit organization based in central Appalachia. They rely on all volunteer help to, from people all around the country, to repair and rebuild the homes of people who live in poverty. Many of those volunteers are high school-aged youth, including many people who are here today. It seems almost unfathomable that 15, 16, 17-year-old youths could make a difference in the lives of people who live in homes that are falling apart, but they can. They do because of the dedicated support of this community, parents, and adult volunteers who make this whole thing happen. I'm pleased that the Presbyterian Church oversees this mission, but it's open to all youths and all people who are interested in helping out. It's not, you don't have to belong to any church to participate. So this past year, and I know a number of the youths are going to be recognized here, but we had some youths who experienced this for the first time, and I think their words expressed this even better than anyone else's. One youth who arrived in central Appalachia and was rather appalled at the living conditions that some people lived in said as follows, "I never understood poverty until we rolled into the homeowner's driveway. Garbage was everywhere. The floors and halls were a mess. I didn't think the team could fix anything. But by the end of the week, the house had a nice, clean, new room that was needed." And he realized, "I can make a difference." For a teenager to realize that they can make a positive difference in this world through doing home repair is a remarkable thing. I'm so proud and honored to be associated with these youths who are willing to give up not only their summer, but a lot of time during the spring to get ready for this mission trip. We do local community service, team building, and skill building. And I'm pleased to see that some of the youths who are recognized here today have done, used their construction skills in other community service projects here. So bring them on, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for this recognition.
Kalen Bronkema. Also accepting on behalf of Dylan Bronkema. Accepting on behalf of Rebecca Lord. Greg May. Kiernan McCarthy. Claire Pickens. Aidan Roney. Brendan Roney. Jeremy Stone. Alex Chia. I know Audrey Taco is here. Thank you again. Joseph Trudeau. John Paul Watts. Jackson Wong. Thank you, Gail. Thank you to all of those students. An impressive night, as always. Are we innocent or guilty? Have you reached a verdict? I just want to thank you all for coming. We're going to head back to the table. I had a couple of announcements that would be of interest to families as well, so if you'd hold on briefly. I just want to thank all these young people who make possible every day all the great stuff that goes on and truly live up to this name of ours, Pleasantville. So thank you all.
One thing we wanted to mention, since we have such a great family crowd here, is, as most of you, I hope, know, there's a new coalition in town called Pleasantville Strong, and the mission is to reduce and eliminate teenage drinking and drug use. And we're going to start a series of parent meetings in January, the first Tuesday of every month, at the Mount Pleasant Library. In each one, there'll be a topic. So the first is Tuesday, January 6th. We'll be talking about the survey that many of you might have filled out. We're going to have the police chief there, we're going to have our youth officer there, we're also going to have members of P-VAC. And then February 6th, which is the second, we're going to have someone from the County Narcotics Department to talk about synthetic marijuana. So we would invite you and your children to come and join us and to get better informed. So thank you. And congratulations to everyone. Very, very impressive night.
You're welcome to leave, but it gets really exciting now. I want you to...
Good night, everybody.
We'll have a brief break while people leave. Welcome back. We had a brief break while the students and families who were honored tonight for the Youth Recognition Night departed the scene. A great night for all. Congratulations to everybody. Now we're back to our regular agenda. I had a few more announcements to make, one of which was that we had a great Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11th at the Branchell Memorial Plaza, organized by Scott Elliott, Commander of the Phantom Nickel American Legion Post. A very, very nice event, as it always is, and in particular, a nice occasion to honor Roger Lemke, longstanding village resident, village employee, extraordinary volunteer and officer for the Fire Department and volunteer and officer for the Pleasantville Ambulance Corps, who was honored this year as a Vietnam veteran and who's also been inducted into Senator Greg Ball's Veterans Hall of Fame. So a great opportunity to honor Roger Lemke and a really, really nice event. Thanks very much to the Phantom Nickel American Legion Post for all they do. I mentioned the last time, but worth mentioning again, the folks who put together the Pleasantville Community Garden in the side yard at St. John's Church did an extraordinary job and have a great short video that introduces you to all that they did. If you're not aware of it, I encourage you to go to their website, which is peavillgarden.org. I think I mentioned at the outset, the tree and dreidel lighting is Wednesday, December 3rd at 7:00 PM. Worth reminding everyone that this Saturday, the 29th, is Small Business Saturday, a national program trying to encourage people to shop local. And for those of you who are American Express cardholders, it actually is a savings occasion if you log onto their website. So Small Business Saturday is an occasion to remind everybody that shopping local keeps the money you spend in your town. Then lastly, I wanted to thank the folks at PCTV and the Chamber of Commerce for putting together what they have done annually, which is a holiday show that goes into many of the stores and businesses in downtown Pleasantville and introduces the store owners and shopkeepers to the community and is a great opportunity to sit in the comfort of your own home and be reminded of all of the many things you can buy right here in Pleasantville, New York. So I encourage you to get yourself to PCTV76.org for a non-demand webcast. I think, and Shane will correct me if I'm wrong, that it's also showing three times a day on broadcast, Cablevision Channel 76, Verizon Channel 36, at 9:47, 3:47, and 9:47 PM. I got the upward thumb? I think I got that right. So really, a great, great thing. It's a great thing every year, but it's just interesting to realize how many great stores there are in the village and to be reminded of the bounty we have available in our retail market. So thanks to the Chamber of Commerce and to Bill Flukes, and also to Shane and PCTV for all of that. Anybody else have anything?
Just we still having our clothing drive downstairs?
Yes, ongoing till the end of December.
Yeah, so if you have any clothing that you'd like to bring in, it's at Ada Wheeler Avenue in the lobby, so please do so.
So here's my last pitch. As we approach Thanksgiving, there's talk of what may be the first snowstorm of the year. Don't anticipate that it's a huge event, but it's a reminder that if you would sign up for the Code Red Emergency Notification System, we would be forever grateful. We will not be using that for any reason except emergencies. But if you go to the Pleasantville website, which is pleasantville-ny.gov, in the left-hand column, click on Code Red, it will give you an opportunity to sign up for emergency notices in several different ways: email, text, cellphone, or landline phone, and gives us the opportunity to reach out to committee members in a circumstance where there's an emergency. We subscribe to this after Hurricane Sandy, when we and all of our neighbors realized how difficult it is to get communication out to people when power is out in many areas. And the Code Red system is a big step forward. So please sign up for it. We're looking for 100% adoption, and we're not there yet. With that, we will go to the Resolutions Number 172, Colleen.
Resolved that pre-check register dated November 24, 2014, covering pre-check numbers 79227 through 79325, have been reviewed and they are hereby approved as listed below, coming from the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Refuge Fund, the Capital Fund, the Trust and Agency Fund, and the Pool Fund totaling $1,836,230.35. And that includes two big retirement payments.
Yes.
It's not a number I usually read.
Right. We do not spend that much every time.
Big retirement payments.
The bills are due.
Yeah.
I do have a question.
Yes.
If the, is the phone in here, the new phone system?
Not yet.
Okay, so the Spain Agency charges, are they just insurance?
Yes, they're general liability insurance.
I've just never seen them worked out like that. Okay, thank you.
So just an opportunity to remind everyone how it works. The retirement system run in New York State is funded by the village as a percent of its active payroll, and then when an employee actually leaves and retires, their pension comes from the state and not from the village. So our payments to the New York State and Local Retirement Fund, which is for our non-unformed employees, this payment is $677,000, $678,000, and the payment to the Police Retirement Fund is $746,000. So that gives you an idea of the scale of the issues we have confronted in recent years when those numbers have skyrocketed relative to where they were a few years back. Happily, they seem to have stabilized, although stabilized at a high level.
Also, the NIPA charges, but the increase coming through with NIPA is significant? I don't know if you saw that, it's a double-digit.
We need to have our NIPA, that's the New York Power Authority. All of our electricity is provided through the Power Authority. We'll need to have our account rep come and talk to us. Every time we save a dollar by changing out a fixture, by going into LED, or doing something we think is progressive, they come in with 18% rate hikes.
Right, and that's, the most current was 18%.
It's just, I just can't keep up with it.
And it's every quarterly, they're coming in with...
I mean, there are different parts of their charges, you know, some of it are related to different PSC tariffs and the like, but we've, we just had gone through an audit with our streetlights, we recaptured over $36,000 that we were due back, and all of that got sucked up very quickly with other charges.
Well, this last increase, they don't, they specifically say it's because of just the cost from, you know, and estimating from what we used last year.
It's all system hardening costs, and system hardening. I mean, Con Edison and NIPA, they're all spending millions upon millions of dollars.
Yeah, but NIPA's not doing any hardening, and that affects us anyway, you know. Con Edison, but it's ridiculous.
Our overhead costs are extraordinary.
Yep.
All right. All in favor of check register?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, November 10th, 2014, and they are hereby approved.
Comments or corrections?
No.
A second, yes.
Yes, second.
Comments or corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Steve, 174.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Philip Myrick to the Planning Commission effective January 1st, 2015. Said appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Joseph Patenza, expiring in April 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Joe Patenza has served extraordinarily well on our planning commission and has resigned effective December 31. I'm happy to report that Phil Myrick is a longstanding and quite distinguished professional planner who moved to the Village of Pleasantville a year or two ago and was happy to take up this volunteer appointment. Proud and happy to have him on the board. All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you, Joe Patenza, for your service.
That's for sure. All in favor, aye, motion approved. 175, Colleen.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Chamber of Commerce to use Jackson Alley on December 6, 2014, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM for ice sculptor demonstrations.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that is...
Isn't that exciting? Sounds fun.
That is a piece of the aforementioned Holiday Open House Weekend, Saturday and Sunday, December 6 and 7. Get the to downtown Pleasantville, and you might want to make sure to get there between 10 and 1 and take a look in Jackson Alley to see the ice sculpture work going on.
I guess we have to hope for cold, right?
Oh, it'll hold up.
Yes.
They do them in Disney, so if you do them at Disney, they could do them here in the winter.
It'll be fine.
Get here early, just come early.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 176, Mindy.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the following donations to the Pleasantville Senior Center for Senior Programs: the Contemporary Club of Pleasantville, $115; Diane DeBellas and Izzy Levine, $50.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you to both of these donors, very much appreciated. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank God you're getting this instead of Jonathan's.
Yes? Go for it.
Okay, so resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments. So I'll just read the amount, the account it's coming from, the account it's going to, and the amount. So we'll be taking a fund balance in putting in $43,130 into the New York State Police Retirement Fund. Then we'll be taking $14,420 from the Music Festival Special Project Fund and allocating it to music festival expenses. $33,400 from the contingency, the general fund, I guess, right? That's the contingency fund?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Putting it into street lighting outside service. $24,275 from the contingency fund into storm sewers and supplies. And then $2,400 from the same contingency fund into PCTV contractual services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions about the budget amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 178.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of James Coleman, architect, hereby authorizes a change order in the amount of $23,015.55 for the pool renovation project.
Is there a second?
Second.
As we have mentioned before, we're in the midst of a renovation of the poolhouse that will give us new lockers and bathrooms. In the course of that, a few things have come up, including a decision to replace the exterior door... exterior doors and to provide an epoxy coating on the floor on the staff side outlined in a memo to us from Patty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 179.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of Joni Ehrlich, hereby appoints Laurie Garcia to the part-time position of recreation attendant at the Senior Center effective November 25th, 2014, at a salary of $12 per hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Welcome, Laurie, to the staff. We have a resolution that was added after the agenda was posted. That's Number 180.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby closes the Tompkins Avenue parking lot on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014, at 3:30 PM for an event at Holy Innocents Church.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good opportunity to remind everybody, as we do every time these come up, that the parking lot at the corner of Mannville and Tompkins is actually owned by Holy Innocents Church, and its public use during times the church doesn't need it is the result of a very generous arrangement between the village and the church. So on this occasion, when they have a special event, they need to take back the lot that's actually theirs. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Any new business? That is the last of our resolutions. We will be going into executive session on matters of advice of council. In the meantime, it's a couple of days away from Thanksgiving. We look forward to everybody having a great holiday. Here's hoping the snow turns out to be nothing instead of an impediment to everybody's celebrations. And once again, congratulations to the raft of young people who marched to Village Hall tonight to be honored for their community service. A really impressive bunch of young people, working for an impressive bunch of community programs led by a bunch of great adults here in the Village of Pleasantville. Just reminds us of the many good reasons to live and participate in the community life of this village. Motion to go into executive session?
So what?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Travel safe.[1791.83][1791.83](end of transcript)